All right, I'd like to call over this Board of County Commissioners tonight. We do have a forum here, Commissioner Allen is out of town tonight, but I'll also with her. We'd like to start off the meeting time with a pledge of allegiance and dedication for that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Ober.
Understand, please. Place the flag, place the legion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for allowing us to live in a country where we respect you, where we respect life. We pray that you would especially be with families in other parts of the world today who are not blessed with this opportunity that we have. We ask that you would be with the leadership of this nation in times of turmoil, that they would seek through God's wisdom from above, that will help them make decisions that need to be made. Thank you for the meaning and willing to protect us and allow us to have the freedoms that we have. We ask that you would be with them, stand by their sides, give them safety and security that only you can provide. Thank you for the blessings that you've given to us, to this county. And remember, be mindful that all good things come from above. In your name we ask.
Recognizing elected officials that we have here tonight, if you're an elected official, if you'd please stand and be recognized. The elected official needs to pass. Okay. Next, recognition of veterans. All veterans, if you would please stand so that we can recognize your service. County Department units, if you would please stand, and we've got service this night, and go and let us know who you are and what department you're with.
Bill McArthur, County Planning Director.
Carol Wilson, Library Director.
Allison Muniham, Resources.
Brian Lipton, Mayor.
Chris Franny, Tax Administration.
Mary Mallon, Community Services.
Would I point out too, I think, Carrie, this is the first time you've been down here and recognized as a public aide, we're proud of you, so. And we also have Henry, is our new clerk up here, this is just for meeting with us in here as well, so honored to have you up here, Henry. All right, Commissioners, now you have before your agenda, and unless there's any changes, I would take a motion to adopt. Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a second, can you have a discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Next portion of this meeting is citizen recognition. Persons wishing to appear before the Commissioner during this portion of the meeting should register their name and the subject that we should address with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. Each presentation will be limited to three minutes. The Board is nervous in hearing your concerns. Its speakers should not expect comment, action, or deliberation on certain matters brought up during public comment segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate county agency. And tonight we have six people that signed up to speak tonight, and the first one is Tim Stalka. Tim, if you could come forward, use your name and address, please.
My name is Tim Stalka, and my address is 145-1 Dix Road, Grover, North Carolina. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for hearing my concerns, thank you for your willingness to lead this community. Are you tired of hearing about the gambling addicts and the evils coming with the casino? Do you think it is about time that the town considers the employment opportunities? Have you dreamed and supported this huge influx of jobs and then felt unappreciated for your efforts to boost the economy? This raises an important question. How can anyone complain about 4,000 jobs, as referenced by the Kings Mountain Herald, that are coming into Kings Mountain and into Cleveland County? My perception is that this Board considers these jobs to be the main issue. Do you feel that the chance gambling addict is a rare exception in your efforts to put these jobs as being unappreciated? I recognize your frustration. Again, I repeat the question, how can anyone complain about jobs coming into Kings Mountain? So let us consider these jobs. 4% of the resorts jobs are funded by the casino and not by the restaurants and hotels. Even if we would conservatively assume that only 1/10 of the jobs were in the casino, that would mean at least 400 of these jobs will be directly funded by casino gambling. Now, how much is the annual income of each of these 400 people? Is it safe to say that the average wage is $12,500? That is a low annual income for sure, but many of these jobs are part-time jobs. So at least we plan on $12,500 coming in annually for 400 people, if you do the math, $12,500 annually for 400 people is $5 million. Now, I remind you that this is $5 million that is being paid for by gamblers' losses? Now, what was that question that we were considering tonight? Oh yes, it was this, how can anyone complain about jobs coming into Cleveland County? Ah, now we are coming to a reason why we complain about these jobs. These jobs are being paid for by $5 million of gamblers' losses. Is it right to fund these jobs by millions of dollars of gamblers' losses? Furthermore, there will be a $340 million mortgage to pay off, according to the Kings Mountain Herald. Will this be paid off within 20 years? Even if only a fraction of this resort is the gambling part of the resort, this will still add several million annually to $5 million of gamblers' losses. Is it right to run a business from $8 million annually of gamblers' losses? And furthermore, still, there is overhead, electricity, water, sewer, property tax, and play benefits, et cetera, that must be accounted for. Furthermore, still, we have to keep gamblers coming back and having a great time, so that some money must also be paid out for some gambling or for some wages. Therefore, gambling losses to me is predicted to be at least $10 million. Now, I'm hoping that question we were considering tonight, oh yes, it was this, how can anyone complain about jobs coming into Cleveland County? Ah, now we are coming to a reason why we complain about these jobs. These jobs are being paid for by millions of dollars of gamblers' losses. Is it right to run a business off of gamblers' losses? Mayor, Chairman, and Commissioners, but we are not a fringe group afraid of a few rare cases of gambling addicts. This casino will depend on many addicts in order to pay for enormous annual operating expenses. A casino will bring jobs, but it will weigh expenses to countless losers. Is this what you want? If not, why not write a letter to the Bureau of the National Affairs, retract these orders for this project? Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Adam Ford. Give your name and address, please.
Adam Ford, 1005 Serenity Woods, Westmore City. Thank you for the opinion and address, Commissioner, and I'm going to start with a quote from a well-known man. Our lives begin and end the day we become silent about things that matter. That was Martin Luther King, excuse me, in one battle he faced. However, here in Kings Mountain, Cleveland County, we are facing an issue that every bit is unjust and important, and the rights now is being fought. We felt that we face a county government that has welcomed a vicious predator into our midst. Although you did not seek or recruit the casino to come to Kings Mountain, you did open your arms enthusiastically to one criminal looking for a home. Many others have and will continue to speak regarding the morality of the casino, and I do not discount our words. I do hope that you know that all of us are unified and are discussed over your acceptance and approvals of government-sponsored predatory gambling. Yes, you as a body are sponsoring the casino. You have told me and every other citizen in this room that video gambling is illegal, immoral, and harmful. You did your level best throughout the video poker predators completely out of the county, and you succeeded. You enacted ordinances and enforced laws that put people into jail for taking part in video gambling. For-profit commercial gambling is illegal unless the government makes it legal. This proposed casino could not exist without your implicit approval, and you will receive revenue from it, which puts you into a sponsorship position. There is no argument that can justify predatory gambling. You can debate the size of the economic impact, you can debate whether it will have a large social impact or catastrophic. You can debate whether it is a sin or not, but no intelligent person could in good faith say that they believe it would be beneficial to the community. I want to close with a couple of statements for you to consider. First, predatory gambling is not what we are as a community, nor is it something we as voters will accept your sponsorship of. It is time for you to consider what is important to you as an elected leader. There is no aspect of predatory gambling that represents where we came from, where we are today, or more importantly, where we want to be five years from now. Lastly, we will not lie for regards any elected official who makes a conscious decision to throw away the morals, values, and ethics of our heritage, more importantly, of our future. This community is proud of our standards, and we will not stand by anybody who takes part in tearing them down for something as revolting as predatory gambling. We refuse to accept a government that profits by undermining public virtues. Thank you.
Mr. Burke. Come forward, state your name and address, please.
Peter Burke, 322 Morris Road, Kings Mountain. Listeners, if we were in the 1600 years we see, you would be found guilty of making a worship in a home of the camp. Had you done it then, you would have been responsible for a plea, just like Aaron was responsible. But wait, as the Jesus said, you become an abolish law. If you believe the Bible, then you are still guilty, but only if you strongly support the casino. By way of Christ, you may be forgiven. My belief is that you can't proceed for sins without confession of guilt. You love to now and ever commit it. I know you did it for the good of the community. You decided, among the people that put you in office, that you were wise enough to play. You did it for the good of the jobs, even if they're played with the lax of the weak and the addicted, and the greedy and the rascal and the dorkish. You did it for the good of the community, although you hurt and experienced those bad habits. You did it for the good of the county, even though being a woman of God admonished you that's wrong. You did it for the good of Kings Mountain and surrounding areas, even though you're not going to support with your own money. I will leave that to the finger in a week. Eight pastors joined us recently in August 26, Kings Mountain City Council meeting. They couldn't be here tonight. But others often are joining to help to stop the casino. If you don't heed because you know the doctrine, most of you have heard from your own pastors that the casino is sinful, but you still do it, right? You supported it even though God was against it. By supporting it, you've gathered your wisdom, prayed with the neighbors. Your reactions perhaps make us believe that you agree with Kings Mountain's leader that we say the same things over and over. It is somewhat perplexing, but not impossible to come up with a million ways to say no. We don't want a casino in our midst.
My name is Victor Ford, Dave Ford, and I live in Kings Mountain, Oklahoma. I immigrated to the U.S. from India 21 years ago because when I was in India, I heard what a great place this was, and it is. I found my own science Bible library during Kings Mountain, where I've lived for the last nine years, and I buy some two things. I appreciate the freedom offered by this magnificent country, where common citizens such as myself have a forum of which to express our deepest concerns and be heard by elected officials such as you all. I owe great debt of gratitude to all of you men in the gathering here that are with us. Being from a whole other place, we recognize the Marines and the DIs, and we recognize government corruption, we recognize predators sponsored by the government, and the government, as I understood it, when I did my civic investments for my citizenship test here, is often people and by the sequel. And what pays this country great is the fact that our government is set up to protect us from predators, be those from across the border or those from within. Abraham Lincoln said, "America will never be destroyed from the outside if we falter and lose our freedoms, and be because we destroy ourselves." I believe by allowing predatory gambling, casinos into our home, now we're at Kings Mountain and Cleveland County, I just believe that we are setting up the stage to destroy ourselves. I can't really see any good coming out of it. You can do a struggle for social concerns, economic concerns, there really is no good that comes out of the casino, coming to our town. And I wish, I really do, I mean, I've been to many of these meetings, been to the city meetings and people, people get up, citizens get up and speak, which is wonderful, but we never get a response or an explanation as to why this is happening. And I understand maybe it's not your control or your, you know, you're on over it, maybe somebody else, but you guys have a big voice, and I wish you would express yourselves and come out and answer it. You know, Nelson Mandela said, "For to be free is not rarely, you cast off one's chains, but to live in a way that respects and enhances the freedom of others." And I don't believe we enhance the freedom of the weakest in our society by bringing a casino within 10 miles of their homes. And the people that we hurt is the weakest in our society, our children, our neighbors, maybe some white, ugly people that go there to play shake things over at the casino. And I just can't see any good coming out of it. I just wish you would sit in your area, and you just really pray about it, because that's what we intend to do to you, is just pray for each one of y'all. Thank you.
Mr. Clark. Take your name and address.
Gloria Clark, 532 Forest Street, Stride. All that we have belongs to God. In 1 Corinthians 10:31, it says, "But whatsoever we do," you know, whatever we do, whether we eat or drink, should bring glory to God. Gambling could be defined as this, the sin of theft by mutual consent. How is that glorified God? Stealing from someone else, whether or not the person decided they would do it mutually? It's never right to do wrong, and it's clear from the study of biblical principles, one being being a good steward of God's things and goodness, working in drawn hands, laboring, giving to others, not taking from them. From all these principles, it's clear that gambling would not please God. It promotes competitiveness, which is a sin, and it's not a good steward of God's resources. Before I came in tonight, I actually took time to pray for each one of y'all, and I prayed that God would open your eyes to the truth about the casino and convict your heart of the wrong you've done and right you've led or supported it. I do not understand how anyone who's a true Christian and strives to obey the principles found in God's Word could ever support a casino coming to Kings Mountain. Thank you.
I'm Joe Clark, 35, 30, 20. I'd also like to talk about the casino, and I'm here today to express my constitutional rights to reach out of our grievance to the public officials. First off, I'd like to just tell a little personal story of how I had a very legal gambling. At the Cleveland County Fair, WU, one of the gaming machines was a coin-operating machine that basically had the illusion that you'd win a lot of money, but you had the only, I observed the only prizes that people had were one of the small tokens, and people never had actually money in cash. But I'll admit, I actually did play some of the coin machines, and I didn't have a lot of money, so I didn't play it a lot. But I actually watched carefully as one young man with, he had like two young women, but he kept playing it again and again and again. He was trying to get a hundred dollar bill, and he was just playing the courts. And then I heard that one of the young ladies with him made a comment that he had just spent over a hundred dollars, and he kept playing for probably, I was around there for about an hour, and later I saw him still playing the same machine. I'd probably estimate he spent at least maybe $200, and that was just, the people would come around and give him a $20 bill or $10 bill, they'd give you those quarters to play it. Now, I'd also like to draw attention to maybe some of the store examples that maybe you're not aware of. I've heard it say that about the jobs, that that's the main justification for this casino. Well, that's kind of the reason, it's kind of the, what justifies means, and the product, the end product of just jobs is justified by whatever means necessary. If it's people losing their money, if it's people, people losing their money, then that's fine, but that goes down in private morals relatively, but there isn't a right, if there's a wrong system, everything exists. I'd like to say a quote by philosopher George Sagnioli, he said, "The only thing necessary for evil to succeed is when good men stand by and do nothing." And basically, if we as people don't stand by, if we stand by that something exists, then what does it permit that from dropping on community from whatever, you've heard that the chocolate life could happen? Also like to mention another incident I heard of, Cherokee Casino, someone's uncle, he gambled away his entire earning, his entire fortune, had nothing, went out and parked him off, put his gun at his head and blew his brains out. And God forbid that that ever happened here, but if it does, then you have to listen to yourself, put your decision in your support. Thank you.
Commissioners next, item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and for that I'll turn it over to our County Manager.
Mr. Chair, thank you so much. Several things tonight, consent agenda for your consideration. You've got in your packet tonight, the board minutes from the July 1st, ready for me, for your consideration, several other items in the area of assessment. We do have our first for the first month of fiscal year 1415, we have July collection reports and we're reporting revenue collected during the first month at 2.44%, just slightly behind where we were last year at this time for our first month. Item C, abatements and supplements, are July 14, 2014, abatements are in the amount of Our supplement for July 2014 is in the amount of $15,854.80. I have three budget amendments tonight. The first budget amendment, item B, budget amendment number five, is in soil and water conservation, and this is a budget amendment of $4,000, and this would allow our Soil and Water Conservation Department to receive anticipated funds from the Farm Office, which will be occurring in October next month. Next, for your consideration, item B, is budget amendment number six, is budget amendment in the amount of $7,154 from the Sheriff's Office. This would be to allow them to budget grant money from the Bureau of Justice Assistance for bulletproof vest partnership grant. What this grant will do would reimburse 50%, and the county's portion has already been budgeted in this current fiscal year. Finally, for your consideration tonight, item F, also is soil conservation, and it's budget amendment number seven, it is a budget amendment in the amount of $14,000, and it will allow Soil and Water Conservation to receive a North Carolina Agriculture Development and Farmland Preservation Trust grant money for this coming year. That is, that is the conclusion of the consent agenda. Staff is here to answer the questions that you may have.
Commissioner Gilbert, consent agenda, are there any questions? Motion approved, is there a second? Got a second, can you have a discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. All right, now onto our regular agenda. First item tonight is, we have Carol Wilson, she's here, she brought a board member with her, and she was here for the Cleveland Royal Library Master Plan.
Thank you so much for allowing us to present our strategic plan to you. With me, I have Dr. Andy Chow, he is a professor at UNC Greensboro. He also has his own company that does this type of consulting work. He has been with us since last January, and he has been about the same in getting us to really evaluate and look at our values and our mission and get this plan to you. We also have our Chairman and Library Board of Trustees, Mark Hudson is with us. And we have Shirley Lael and Karen Bell, who were, took part in the process, they were in the focus group that talked about the Western, Library Services to the Western part of the county. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Chow for an explanation of what you have there. That is the final version of our strategic plan, which is required by the state for us to continue to get state money. We have to have a strategic plan that is viable for five years. Dr. Chow.
Thank you so much for having me tonight. Being a Florida boy, I'll first off say that you guys have probably the best barbecue ever. Carol, it's been very nice to go out there, do some of that here. I just want to walk you through the strategic plan, and please, if you're asking any questions, and if Carol would, yeah, answer any questions as well. Starting with really the second page, I just wanted to start with a couple of community comments. The first one is, "Communities are literate, and employers cannot hire local libraries by people." Second quote, "Providing a place for kids with books, there's no price you can put on that." And then the third quote, "Finding what you were not looking for is a large aspect of using libraries." Really, I think those three quotes reflect nationwide trends as far as how the role of libraries are shifting, and that's one of the big questions that the nation, really the world are asking about, the role of libraries. And I think as our study has shown, similar to many of the other studies I've done across the state, the focus on hard cover, hard copy books, excuse me, is becoming a little less with the shift in that, just to go further than that. The second, let's skip over to the first page one, the introduction. So the overall study took place, and although we began data collection in January, and Carol and I have been talking about this in early fall, so it's going to be heard along the process, if you look at the initial paragraph and the executive summary, approximately 300 people participated in the study, including 14 interviews with many community leaders throughout the county, two community forums, two focus groups, a survey of 1,000 randomly sampled county residents, and also a general survey response. And so that's in terms of methodology, certainly even a wide breadth of data collection, and I feel very good about, although we would prefer a larger sample size, it's still a very good diverse sample. Getting down to the bottom paragraph, I think some of the shifts from the last 10 years, 2004 to 2014, again, less circulation of books in favor of computers, non-print circulation and program attendance, and what we see is a slight small decrease in hard book circulation, a large increases in terms of internet use on computers, website hits, and non-print circulation. Just wanted to draw your attention to that. Page two, in the middle of the page, so when we talk about the library's role, kind of consensus amongst different methodologies, the library's role is filled for the public sector in areas of the private sector fails, re-access to technology, early childhood education, and retraining of workers, I thought that would be very important, get comment that I think really underscores the value of libraries in the community. Going down to the bottom of that same page, community members also feel the library's key change over the past decade. Clientele has changed from the upper echelon to more middle-class and lower socioeconomic, who are seeking clearance and access to many free resources of the library. Let's move on to the next page, because I'm running out of time. Last full paragraph, despite and in fact because of the emergence of the internet, the community really has need libraries more than ever, while still serving its fundamental purpose of housing books and the community's historical archives, libraries are now more than ever multi-purpose facilities. Truly a nexus point for government services and the citizens. Truly a nexus point for government and services and citizens that is trying to serve access to the technology and internet, certainly closing the digital divide. Printing and copying, classes, meeting spaces, community events, children and young adult activities, book clubs, books, and lots of books. I'll skip over to the final conclusions, which is on page five. So after all of the data question, really five or six can mean, conclusions one, the community really does what and love libraries. And really one of the things they're asking for is if that continues and continues to be strengthened and focused on is for services, so can access and services, education, children and youth programming, books and other reading material. And I want to emphasize that books and reading is really not arguable. We talk about hard copy books and e-books related questions, if you want to read and make some gestures when you ask them, they want to read all of that. They want access to quality reading material. Number two, increased marketing research. So one of the things that stood out is that overall, county membership of the library has decreased over the last ten years significantly. And so that's definitely a threat as far as the use of libraries. Certainly increase access to technology, focus on organizational excellence, and certainly in terms of, one of the things that are happening with libraries across the country and certainly here in Cleveland County, is that oftentimes patients have better technology than a library itself. And so they'll come in asking for, and I'm going to joke, in most public libraries, that January is a busy time for folks to get Christmas presents, right? And come in asking how they use this. And oftentimes librarians are frustrated, they haven't seen the technology either. So in terms of training, that's an increase in the need among libraries. Increase hours of existing locations, of course, and then despite the trade constraints, the thing that we're hearing is that people really would like libraries when they need them. And a lot of business people, of course, have the work, do not have as much access as they would like. And then explore potential growth in uncertain areas, like Golden Springs was a question. Certainly talking to some of the Golden Springs community members, they do want library services, especially as the youth, they don't have families in that area. All right, so real fast, we're going into the main parts of the strategic plan, sub-vision. We strive to make our library destination Cleveland County residents of all ages to explore, discover, and learn. Our director came up with that during our deliberations. Mission statement, Cleveland County Library System empowers the citizens of Cleveland County, enhances their quality of life by providing safe, welcoming environment to access relevant information, books and resources, programs, and technology with assistance of friendly, highly-trained, knowledgeable staff. And then we went this last sentence, above all, will provide respectful, positive, effective, and universal touch of service to all of Cleveland County. And then this, going through with that core values, so the couple of highlight professionalism, so really the emphasis on excellence, expertise, accountability. People want the expertise of professional, knowledgeable librarians. An emphasis on the public good, so certainly again, the diversity of patients that visit public libraries, it needs to increase. And so the emphasis is on trying to meet their needs and help the community. And then the last one, value five, love of learning, really the idea that public libraries are there, really from cradle to cradle. The idea that the needs of the community really determines changes, kind of just be there throughout life. Core confidences, books, information, resources, and services, the only question about the value of libraries is the quality of the collection, the quality of information that they're providing to your community. So certainly the internet is pervasive, but the quality and the dating process of that information is questionable at times. So certainly the library, the community turns to its library to trust information. Core three, the idea of relevant, community-based programming services and resources, so really the idea there is not just provide resources, but to do things like you just did as far as reaching out to the community and make sure that we understand what their needs are. Core value five, robust technology. So the idea that by the ten years from now, we can have robots walking around, is definitely more and more than the possibilities of the idea of technology and the need to provide training for that technology is something again, that libraries are continuing to embrace more and more. And outreach marketing, so the resources that you have in Cleveland County are quite, the problem is, it seems that not enough people are aware of them. Maybe some people have fallen prey to the stereotype that libraries aren't important, but again, rest assured that they are. So certainly having more people go to your libraries are things important. And then we finish with four goals, so goal one, and these are all priority order, so as voted on by the public and the staff, Cleveland County, these are all rank orders. Goal one, high-quality books and other information sources, so one point one, expanded young adult collection. So certainly the youth, children are always a top priority to public libraries. Books, information sources for all ages, so again, the avenue of meeting the needs of a broad cross-section of the community. That's the goal two. So high-quality access and technology is goal two, again, this is priority order. So high-end and reliable technologies, again, the digital divide is still very real in this county, as well as across the state of the country. So certainly providing access to folks with technology when they need it, especially those if you did, those in the community that do not have it, it's critical. Leading wireless and mobile technology, so a lot of technologies are moving away from computers per se, moving more to wireless and mobile devices. And again, people come into the libraries expecting to be able to use that and access the collection. Twenty-four seven web services, so again, more and more library services are online, necessary transactions that occur in the libraries occur through the library website and its databases, and certainly social media. And then two point four, I think, especially critical nexus for digital literacy services in the county. So one of the things that came across in this needs assessment, as well as statewide, is the community doesn't trust libraries. And so when we say oftentimes that people discover things they weren't looking for in libraries, what counties are starting to realize, you can deliver a lot of different services to your libraries. So I think certainly when we talk about technology, this is the opportunity for the county to really showcase this technology throughout the county, and not just housing necessarily, which is a lot. And then I want two more goals, goal three, organizational excellence. So again, the number one priority, as identified by the community, was a demand for highly-trained technology, knowledgeable staff. So obviously, when people come into the library, they want answers. Meeting and growing change demands in Cleveland County is certainly one of the focuses of this needs assessment, is to make sure that the system was aware of the priorities for the county, which I think we did a good job of that. And then building renovation and interior redesigns, so as the needs of libraries continue, where the needs of the community continue to drive the changes in libraries, obviously with relative order, libraries, the whole community needs change. And that is truly a fact, and so certainly the idea of renovating and interior redesigns to reflect those changing needs are important. And finally, the final goal, marketing outreach and programming, so certainly number one, four point one, programming that supports economic development. So really supporting the county's economic goals, the library can support that. And then again, supporting the county libraries, the idea that the library doesn't just exist on its own, but certainly is aligned and flexible and resilient enough to support what is important in the county. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to finish thanking Dr. Chow for his consultation and hardworking barbecue fun dinners that we've had over the year. But I also wanted to pass out to each of you a little quick fact sheet, if you ever, you know, somebody ever asked, well, how many feet goes visit your libraries? Couple of little things, the main one I wanted to point out to you is the bottom one, and that is, we can't do it alone. We have wonderful partnerships with many people and institutions in the county that build on what the county does for us, which is absolutely the crucial part. But if you'll notice on there, the American Legion World Series worked with us and sponsored our summer reading program. And each child who finished the summer reading program got a ticket, and all of that ticket to, to the games. And so we were so thrilled at that, and that was such a big hit. So it's partnerships like that that really keep us going, and we just want to say thank you for all of your efforts. Thank you. And we'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Chow. Any questions for Dr. Chow or for Carol?
Yes, just like I said, you know, for county that, you know, is literate and so forth, was that research, was that just a comment? Because I thought we were doing real well on bringing our people up to speed with the college and work they're doing at different organizations, is that, that something?
It's still an issue. I think it's where it's, you know, the definitions can vary between illiterate and functionally illiterate. And as we say, we're, we start at the cradle. We have babies that come in for programs that sit on a parent or grandparents' lap, and we're giving them skills that will eventually help them to learn and to learn language and to learn reading and things like that. So we say we're in the business of preventing illness. But it's still an issue of partnership for children, I was on that board for twelve years. It's, it's been a struggle, it's, there are a lot of people out there who may be able to sign their name, but they functionally don't have the, you know, they can't read a contract, they can't read a bank statement. You know, they're, they may be able to write their name and sign to get their paycheck or something, but, but the issue is there and, and we work hard for it.
Chris, I know you're doing, I know you're doing a fine job, and I've got a few questions. And like the answer said, you're, you're attending to, you're attending to your library, okay? And that's everybody, counted everything that comes in. If you have a record of repeat visits, like, you may have one person, they come three times a week, five times a week.
We don't have, we don't have a way to count that our system, because of privacy issues, does not record, like, whenever they check out. I mean, as long as they have something checked out, yes, we have it on, think, the minute they turn it in, it's gone. That's for their privacy, you know, the FBI is getting it all that.
I think that's a good number to work out, so we would don't have any family stuff.
Now, I, I.
Because I'm losing, the question is, with the school system, and it just happened in Ruffin County, Ruffin County put an iPad in every student's hand and they take it home, okay? The system is putting out wifi in every house. We recently got a group that's putting towers in the county, they're going to start supplying wifi for the kids to, on free lunch, or reduced lunches, lunch, anything. And in talking to the school system, they're buying more iPads to put in the students' hand. Is this going to cut down on the use of having to go to the library?
You, you would be surprised how many people come in to use our library who have equipment, they have computers and tablets and everything at home, but they can't find what they're looking for. We've got the expertise to help put them together with the information they need. They'll go, I've searched and searched and searched the internet and I can't find it. We know how to get it to them. The other thing is, they'll come in, they're traveling, they're from out of town, they're a businessman, they're doing business here in the county, they don't live here, they stop in to check their email or, you know, something. They, my printer doesn't work, and I need to print this out, you know, for school or whatever. They come in and use our thing. As I say, you know, we have thirty-one thousand plus uses of those computers, as I say, and, and about a thousand per computer, times that the staff helps people with, you know, all the issues of finding right information. It's amazing when someone comes in who's an adult and sits down and looks up what they think is good information, and we just happen to be helping them, and they go, oh, here's what I need. And what they were going to rely on to write their paper for community college was actually written by a fourth grade class.
Sure, and I forget, I guess the question I had with the technology that's coming and being available to our citizens through iPhones, iPads, and the amount of money we spend on technology, are we looking at a balance? Or are we gearing up for something that we're not going to?
We're, we, it's my opinion and the opinion of the profession, that we, there will always be a need for us to be guiding people in their use of technology.
If I may speak to that, that's a really good point. I think that really, you have to look at technology as a means to the quality of information in the library database, the steward of the collection. So certainly you could have an iPad, but a lot of the information up there, and it's not free, and free stuff is probably not stuff you wouldn't care to create anyway. So really the idea of, even if they have a wireless iPad, you want them to have access to quality information in the database, that's the number one. Number two is that, I think the other thing, which you're absolutely right, sir, is that libraries are becoming more and more meeting spaces. So you can also envision in fact, if, in fact, people did, were empowered with that type of technology, there still would be places to gather, places to meet. Libraries began serving that need, where the idea of maker spaces, or idea of information commons, it's a safe place where the mom and dad want to drop their kids off, we drop them off at the library and meet, you know, kinds of things like that. So absolutely, and I think the other thing I would say, last thing I would say, is that the community needs assessments are always different, right? So depending on your community needs, in fact, you got to that point, then the question would be, does the community still need access to quality, free information, safe, and then knowledgeable individuals? And the answer will always be yes, it might be configuration may change, but it's almost.
And, and it was told us at a meeting recently, that by twenty seventeen, the state is going to go to total digital textbooks. The students will not have textbooks. And I'm sure that that will happen in the higher education. But we promote lifelong learning. Somebody may need some training for, to get a job, because the job they had disappeared and it's not ever going to come back. So they need something else, and that's where we can step in and put them in touch with the databases that will help them with career choices and learning opportunities to train for another career. So all of those things, people evolve in our, you know, in our thing, but what we will be doing is that guiding and providing and connecting that people need.
Real fast, but only for Carol, and the other thing that to keep in mind is that there's always going to be a digital divide. So if God has anybody's hands, now, well, they do have robotics or whatever it might be. There's always going to be that group that can't afford, but everybody else can afford. And again, libraries, and then they'd be the great equalizer, where you can, you can give the libraries a high-quality resources, that's an issue right there. So return on investment, the libraries are staggering, because you put good technology, excellent technology, and everybody can use it, right? How do you even play field? And that's a huge concern.
Mr. Scherzer, any other comments or questions?
Yes, Miss Karen. Dr. Chow, I believe I actually met you for a few minutes in King Mountain.
Yes.
You were talking to Sharon at the time. The first question is, are you actually doing a strategic plan for the Moni Memorial also?
Not, not at this time.
They're just basically meeting you.
They, they are on a kind of a different schedule. I think they did one last year, and so they would not need one again until two thousand and eighteen.
Well, Carol, let me talk to them, this kind of part of this.
Right, because we, we do, you know, our, we share our catalog, we share our, if you remember one library, you remember all of our libraries. You know, we act as if we are one unit, but we are in two separate databases.
And one comment I'd like to make, because I am next door, and so I'm, obviously I see the traffic that goes into the Moni Memorial Library. And there, there's always going to be a certain mission there that's going to be there to access the library and the computer. If I'm out on stage and from Sharon, they actually have to go in and sign in, and you have a waiting list, you know.
Sure, yeah.
And then of course you get, they get, you know, to, they just can't go in and just sit down and occupy the computer space for hours on end, because of those.
We, we have to limit it to two hours a day, because we can't, we would, we would just have people waiting at the door. We, we have to limit it to two hours a day because we can't, we, we would just have people waiting at the door.
And, uh, speaking for, um, my former senior center, um, they are all more and more classic to seniors. I'm not going to lie, one of the librarians, and the one biggest complaint that I have, we have a website, the one biggest complaint I have from most seniors is that you don't have no obituary on the bit, on, on the website. So, we're going to try to get it on there for them. But, uh, I'm just proud of the age of some of the individuals who have become here savvy, more so than I. But, uh, I say, I, I made you for a minute, but, uh, it wasn't long and it's good to see you.
I think, uh, I would hope, uh, Carol, it's very important for us to continue our partnership with you because one of the things that's really concerning us in a lot of ways is the poverty level of the county.
Yes.
And, uh, it's not good, which certainly means that there's going to be more traffic causing necessity to you than one of our dreams, I think our goals, to be to lower that poverty level, but still there's going to be a tremendous amount of services that you provide.
And, and we welcome every single person. We, um, as I say, when we write a bookmobile, which we now have as an outreach channel, when you write a bookmobile like I did yours, uh, and you build a house where the front porch on one end is held up by a commode, you gotta think those people don't have much, but they have love for reading. They wanted that bookmobile to stop every month. So those are the people you want to get to and you want to get them young and you want to convince them, but that's the way to go. And so that's what we work hard to do.
I, I'd like to, to, um, say thank you, uh, Dr. Chow, for all your work on this. And Carol, and I appreciate I've been in the circle on the board. I've, I've enjoyed that. Um, and I'm, you know, as far as the library system in Cleveland County is concerned, you know, some of my best memories involve the library. Um, when I was growing up, going to move after school a lot of days after, after one, you know, keeping out of the schools, a lot of times I'll be at the library. Uh, my kids end up out there. When I head into the cheerover to, over to the funeral home, they'll be next door and I know that's a safe place for them to be where they can, it's a, it's a nurturing environment. It's not something that they just, they're going in, sitting down playing their video games and things like that. They have an opportunity to learn and do their homework there. And, uh, you know, the, the library here, one of my best memories was taking my son, I had a Star Wars thing. And, uh, my son, one is a Jedi Knight. And got to see all the other characters there and y'all did it up right. Thank you.
Yeah, we had to recognize that.
That's a lot. Y'all did a great job. I would like it, if we can, if we can recognize all the friends in the library, the library board members, anyone that has, that's here for the night for the library, if they stand up so we can recognize you. Y'all there in the stands. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chow.
All right, Commissioners. The next one is a, uh, we have Brian Epley coming, if you'll come, sir. Uh, our finance director for county capital asset capitalization threshold. Sounds really cool. Uh, it's a, and it's hard to explain now. One, 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 one.
Well, first thing, we, uh, which, this, uh, what a, what a purpose, uh, the proposal is to simply get us more in line with what our, what our table legislation and the state oversight committee proposes. They actually issue little residential statements. And, and, and what our proposal, that's the department's proposal, simply gets us more in line with that. Um, it's had nothing to do with this, the day-to-day operations, it's simply residential reporting and asset management threshold change. Yeah, I'll be glad to answer any direct questions, but in essence, it's, it's just that. It has nothing to do with budget operations. Um, it's just at what amount that we capitalize assets at the same person.
If, if I could, because the easiest thing to make out of things, whenever you, whenever I heard an example of what, how this actually impacts, impacts our county or, or impacts our, um, county.
Exactly.
You can give an example.
So, um, so if the county purchased or built a building and spent less than a certain dollar amount, um, the building would have been capitalized. It wouldn't, we wouldn't take ownership of the building and it would just all be expensed at one time versus, um, versus recording that as an asset on the county's financial statements. So in essence, you walk home, that's, that's an easy example. Um, if you had a hundred thousand dollars for a house, would you, would just be a hundred thousand dollars less rich or poor? Or would you have, you know, a little less money in the house? So your, your, your financial status doesn't really change, you're not poor, but now you have this asset called house. So, does that help? Um, it's just, is that, that example help?
It, it does, I mean, because I asked a question about four, about time, how to explain four, about time.
What is, what is the threshold?
Uh, right now, it's, it's, they're only in both categories. Building is the one that's, that's, the inland is the one that's out of contact with what our favor. The foundation, the little residential savings kind of suggests it's a hundred thousand. So that would go to fifteen based on the proposal that you had in the packet. So, it, and, and, and there are, um, I don't know all of the current ones off the top of my head, but, but they're all needing to be adjusted for consideration.
Vehicle?
Vehicle is motor, vehicle, motorized equipment are, are broke out separately. Um, on here, there's just to be ten. I think they're served to about double that right now. I don't want to speak exactly, if I'm not sure.
I guess they're assets that we do appreciate a lot over the-
Not if you don't capitalize it, you don't appreciate it.
Don't have any of them.
If you, if it's over the threshold, then you capitalize and appreciate it. If it's not over the threshold, then you expense all at one time.
Yeah, well, you know, you said ten thousand for a vehicle, we bought from the sheriff's department, it was over ten thousand, so that would be-
Yeah, all of those. If you buy them big-
And you'd appreciate them over the year?
Yeah, over, I think vehicle is five year useful life, so, yeah. And the, the useful life of the county has, is, is in line. I'm not proposing things there, just the capitalization of ourselves.
Do you have any questions?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, is possible that I get, uh, kind of our attorney to repeat the airplane trial and say it's a different.
I have to get some time.
Any other questions? All right, and would it take action on this, Mr. Craig?
Yes.
So Commissioners, do I hear a motion to adopt or deny it yet?
I think we adopt this proposal, divided with, with statement.
Got a motion and second, and second. Any other discussion? All of us in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Thank you, Frank. All right, that brings down the public hearings, uh, for our meeting. After the third hearing, has been open persons wishing to speak for or against the proposition we ask to come forward and first state his or her name and address. All comments from the vote are to be directed at the board. There are no comments directed at open university audience. If the speaker has a question, that question is to be directed toward the chair. No one may allow to speak in hearing order once the chair recognizes the speaker a second time for rebuttal or confirmation brought forth after a speaker has spoken. The original presentation by speaker will be limited to no more than five minutes. The rebuttal presentation will be limited to no more than three minutes. And I would like to ask, um, Chris, if you'll come up and, that's on a map amendment for twenty-five thirty-seven and twenty-five forty-three, over program.
We didn't, we had, uh, zone management requests and the petitioner is J. E. Muckadoo and he's requesting changes on two adjoining properties. Um, one, as you can see, is own general business and the other is manufactured home parks. And he would like these properties to be zone restricted residential. Um, property is located on the over road road between Shelby and Kings Mountain. And it's adjoining Moss Lake on the east. And it's adjoining an existing restricted residential property on the south side. And then you have some residential and neighbor, or manufactured home parks going across the road. There's a existing commercial, an abandoned commercial business on the property. And bring a, the reason the property would bring any character with the, the Moss Lake property surrounding residential uses. You do have two recommendations, one from Isothermal and then one from the Platinum Word. Isothermal, they recommend to approve it and they indicate the land use plan, that it's compatible with the land use plan that areas designated as residential. And they also indicate that it would be compatible with the, the lake properties, the residential lake properties surrounding it. And the Platinum Word also recommended to approve with the same, um, indications of the land use plan and the character of the neighborhood around it. And I can answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions, President Trump? All right. That will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, if you please come forward, state your name and address, please. Anyone wishing to speak for or against? All right, seeing that, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, your thoughts? Second, most approve and second.
This is easier with the landlord request that most of the time you get some argument out of his fussy.
Any other discussion? All right, all of us in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Commissioners, we're down to Commissioners' reports now. And, um, we'll start now after you end of the day, first.
Um, it's really actually August, except in, um, and all activities have been taking place. Uh, most important of all took place today, which turned out all between September. Mr. Mollbrook was able to be there today and I see Tommy Green, all of his people there today. But, uh, we recognize the gentleman today at the, uh, College Trustee Board. And, uh, this gentleman, the College Board, is one of the most significant and one individual to give the most impact to this community than, than most people in that community. Mr. Bailey, uh, who had been in the lineup for several years. And today, the board of trustees decided to recognize Mr. Bailey as Chairman of Meritas for all fifteen years as chairman, twenty-seven years on the, uh, Trustee Board. That not counting the time that he's been completing the county's board. So, Mr. Bailey is now, uh, in the position of the board, Chairman of Meritas. He still faces his L D U, but I'm sure he will still be a prominent part of, of our community and continue to give a lot to, uh, make the Cleveland County the best. Uh, Mr. Ellison Rhodes, longtime board member again, longtime supporter of the college, uh, was named Chairman of the Board today. And I think I would see him.
Mr. Questions?
I'm like, all right, had a lot going on with World Series, I'm sure you're ready to bring something to date on that on the show. Okay, but I enjoyed it, uh, we called it to the national convention and recognized so, we better take care of that. We had the voted board council meeting in King Mountain today. One of the major things we bring up today, we had a meeting with Wala on the public gun range. Last week, he had a, I missed something, he was bringing up today the development. Other than we've got the basic plans we agree on. If they're going back to Raleigh, they're going to put it in B F form into jail. I think just so they need to work out some details, get them some information on them. How we're going to bid it, how it's going to be handled during the bidding process, how it's going to be handled in the working phase of it, up to the point that it's finished. One thing we did agree on, you know, any problem with it, that Wala put in one billion dollars. We've nested with county contributions, like the land that was purchased through the landfill. Right now, it's going to agree minimum of any local tax dollars put into this itself is going to wind up a lot of two billion dollars. But we had money to come from other sources to help us with it. I think Kerry is getting a hold of a couple of people with their land rights here so we can move along with this thing. I don't know, but I'm hoping in the next sixty days, we can have this thing bid it out, know who the contractor is going to be and go to work on it, is that your feeling?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And like I say, we've, uh, I've talked to one of the issue parties, they're interested in helping us in lighting. And as we get to B A ten, we've got all the fields, so there's going to be an opportunity for different organizations that want to participate in the public gun range. The public gun range will be open to the public at all times, except the times it's going to be down from maintenance. And two, it's going to be a place that we can train individuals, whether male or female, that does not know much about firearms, so for our people to be safe in the county. This is going to be a place that we can provide a safe environment for the guys and ladies that enjoy the shooting sports, to be example. Thirty-seven percent of the fitness Robinson Fund with its tax dollars that the hunters and fishermen and the shooters had voted on themselves years ago. Coming from just average shooters that like to get out and enjoy this sport, they come out of place to do it so. And this is going to be the nicest gun range probably in the North Carolina and most of the surrounding states. So, uh, with that being said, I will take questions from the constituents, if you have any on the gun range. And Willie, Willie does want to challenge you to imagine.
Yeah, I could be on the panel.
So, uh, if you have anything to add to it, I might have missed, and Kerry, I might have Kerry. Kerry was there also, since the company she worked for was, was contractor, so she was a big asset in the, in the meeting. So, uh, we had to find out for people, I think, and it provided the tables that was, uh, firm in getting this thing going. So the next step is, and any ideas in a couple of weeks, we should have everything back in a couple of weeks and ready for B A shooting.
Yes, sir. I think the next step is for, uh, the, the tasks to get together and to work out the technical details and the documents uh, to make sure that whenever we do our, our pre-bid meeting and we, like, contracts should come in and Brian will answer questions. And we get a very, we have a very successful bidding process, uh, in the, for the project. So I think that would be done.
We're looking at naming some positions that will come back to you later, they, the project engineer, the project manager, the range master and a couple of things that we're going to start putting in place in the next sixty days. And we'll come back to the committee and, uh, ask you for your approval, so there'd be no question about it. But, uh, with the guidelines that y'all set for us, we pursued it and we're staying within the guidelines that you approved for us and, uh, hopefully that, uh, for, for some of the elements don't know, the gun range is going to consist of two hundred and fifty yard rifle. Okay? The side is going to be a fifty yard pistol range. That'll be burned, fixed for safety. Okay, and then there's another area is going to be skeet trap and modified plate that you can come and shoot if you enjoy it. Okay, along the creek is going to be a three D archery target that you can walk around the creek and shoot three D archery. Also on the back side, and this is all the bids and we're looking for some sponsors, we're going to have some, uh, individuals, ranges that can be set up, shotgun, three gun, uh, cowboy shooting, uh, boys, boys and girl clubs, B B, small arms, something that, that we can teach the kids to, on the safety on this range. So it's going to be something for all ages, except the, the smaller, the smaller kids, there are going to be certain rules and regulations that classes and throw out air guns and things like that, that we're going to follow N R A guidelines on it. So they've got some specific guidelines with age limits and different things. So the main thing is, the, the range is going to be safe, but if anybody hurt, we're not going to have anybody hurt. You have anything? Kerry?
That's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mollbrook?
Right, Mr. Chairman, first of all, I thank each of you for your support that you gave to the World Series. job with the World Series, first time I've been told that the national convention has done such honors. So the citizens of the county were honored. And Mr. Hutchins brought along a lot of county pins and ran out, so county pins are, are being worn by American Legion delegates across the country. Also, we suffered a very severe loss during the convention, which you probably do not know, gentlemen, Jerry Hetrick, who was one of the three highest ranking officials in the American Legion organization, and a principal component, driver of the World Series landing in a permanent location, and of course, being located in Shelby, and he was living in Lexington, North Carolina. He was a very strong advocate for landing in North Carolina, landing in Shelby. Long story short, he had a history of car problems, and he passed away on breakfast feeding, massive heart attack on Monday morning of the convention. So it's a, it's a huge loss. It's a position that would be hard to be filled, and we should remember Marie, who was his wife, and their family, and a very sad contract.
Thank you. Their parents are with their family and with the American Legion, I know how, how involved he was in, in their organization. And I'd like to congratulate you and the volunteer team, y'all did an outstanding job with the American Legion this year. Every year at the end of the, since like the end of the series, the, the question always comes, what are you going to figure next to you? And y'all always talk it. So appreciate what y'all done. The, the listeners tomorrow, the Veterans Council is going to be meeting to develop a strategic plan for their Veterans Council that this board has created. And Kerry is going to be helping lead that, that group and developing their strategic plan. So I appreciate what you're doing with that. And it has been extremely busy a couple weeks. So school started back since we met last, so that's, you know, I've got the two kids in school, that's, that's, that's from core, on everybody's plate, so they think about the kids. Retail Task Force, I know Susan is, we've asked Susan to lead that, she has done an outstanding job with the Retail Task Force, and has really got the follow-on, started developing some community partners, and I'm excited to see the direction on that. So one other thing I want to mention before I turn over this side of the table is, tonight we're going to lose one of our regulars in the meetings, it's going to be, this is her last time, but she's going to be coming here, I guess on official capacity, and that's Jessica. So Jessica Pickens with the star. We've enjoyed having you at meetings, you've done, you've done an outstanding job, and it's always been good to, good to have you in the audience. So, Commissioners, or, or, does that have anything on this side?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Kerry, I think one other thing, look at the gun ring. I've been invited to go and speak to the, to the North Carolina Association of Landfills, the North Carolina Association of Landfills in October. And what they've been looking at is reclaim landfills, buffer areas, what can we do with the land that we've got? And it just so happened that we probably got one of the largest projects going on in the buffer area of the landfill, which is land that can't be used for nothing else, and not only for the gun ring, but there's other ideas out there for the gun ring, for emergency driving pad for the body departments, ambulance service, the police department is in the, in the future at some point, one time. Even talk to the colleges about the education facility there for reclaiming the police officer route and different other groups of people that go to the college. So I have to go to mention that, but going down in October, if we'll present on that and, and Kerry is putting together a pocket for it.
Anything else we want to talk about tonight? There's nothing, I'm going to take a motion to the chair. Second, third, always, let's go on.